Order this branch, if you please call the roll.
Here. Rose. Here. Here. Here.
If you please join me in a moment of silence, all of other pleads of allegiance. Generally, we have amended agenda tonight. Any questions or comments before we get going?
Mr. Chair, I'm of adoption of the amended agenda.
Oh, second. Motion and properly second in discussion, Ms. Branch.
Hi. 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 Hi.
Hi. Now, we're up for the public comment period. Just want to remind everybody, individuals get three minutes, groups representing a group, five minutes apiece. If you could please state your name and your district when you come up to the podium. We'll go ahead and open public comment here.
Good evening.
Evening.
Evening. My purpose for coming here is to first thank all of you for considering the place I have sent to you in earlier correspondence concerning the procedures, rules, and regulations currently in place at the King William Animal Shelter. Some might say that this is a non-issue, and they would be correct if, if this county was a dictatorship. It's not. Therefore, I believe serious steps should be taken in completely implementing a new set of procedures, rules, and regulations. Gentlemen, we are dealing with high-dow animals here at this shelter, or the American Kennel Club. These are dogs and cats, or animals that have been picked up by the ACO, dropped off on the side of the road, lost creatures or abandoned creatures. Any taxpayer citizen of this county should be able to adopt a suitable animal from the shelter without having a background check done or questions that resemble the sheriff interrogating a fellow. Rather than repeat what I have written to you in the formal correspondence, I will relate my last visit there by telling you some of the questions that I was asked. What are you going to feed the dog? How are you going to feed the dog? Do you intend to exercise the dog? How are you going to exercise the dog? Will you bring the dog into your house? Is your yard fenced? How big is your yard? What are you going, where are you going to keep the dog? Are you going to bring the dog into your house? Where would you keep the dog outside? What will you keep the dog in? Are you going to bring the dog into your house? Now, that's three times. I was asked that question four times, and I want to know why. Furthermore, I was asked, who is your vet? Do you know there's a veterinarian crisis in King William, Virginia? And oh, by the way, the dog hasn't had its heartworm test. I asked when it would be done. By tomorrow, I was told. But you are responsible for the cost. You know that. Well, how much does it cost? $300 a shot, and there are two shots. I'm not going to pay $600 for this dog. Would that be a deal breaker? Yes, but please determine its status. We'll call you in the morning. The next morning, I received a call from a person at the clinic that said, we have denied your request for this dog. I said, why? Why would you deny a request? Because you're not bringing the dog into your house. The dog has to be socialized. It's a beagle. It's an outside dog. They replied, it must be brought into your house. It must be socialized. These questions and others that were asked me were invasive. They discriminated towards my age. There were innuendos and non-essential questions to the adoption process. Personal information, in my opinion, is none of the shelter's business, but because they have had no oversight for who knows how long, they have concocted these ridiculous rules, procedures, and questions that have made this taxpayer funded. As a reminder, the county, a shelter of freewheeling, you will do, as we say, standalone bureaucracy. It needs to be fixed, and they need to be held accountable. Thank you for hearing me. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Yes, sir. Your name and district.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wayne Owens, District Three.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for seeing us tonight. My name is Heather Malali, and this is Lawson Kirkhill. We are advocates and counselors from Pride, Virginia. We're here to speak to you about the work that Pride, Virginia is doing in King William County and asking you to pass the proclamation to make October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thrive Virginia is a community action agency dedicated to fighting poverty, and as such, our work involves supporting survivors of domestic violence. On average, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. During one year, this equates to more than 10 million women and men. One in three women and one in four men have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner. One in seven women and one in 25 men have been injured by an intimate partner. One in 10 women have been raped by an intimate partner. That is still unavailable on male victims, as this is an underreported crime. On a typical day, there are more than 20,000 phone calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Those numbers are shocking, but what does it mean for the communities that Thrive serves? According to the 2021 census data, the population of King William County is approximately 18,171 individuals. About 50.8% of those are women, 49.2% are men. If national data can be applied to King William County, that means about 3,077 women and 2,235 men have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner in 2021 in this county. In fiscal year 2022, Thrive Virginia served 76 individuals in King William County that had been affected by domestic violence. Forty-seven were adults, 29 were children. As a result of this domestic violence, these individuals experienced three reported sustaining injuries that required emergent medical attention, 10 missed time from workers' school, 7 reported a loss of financial security or income, 10 had to relocate or became homeless, and 9 considered suicide. Intimate partner violence accounts for 15% of all violent crimes. The presence of a gun in a domestic violence situation increases the risk of homicide by 500%. If an individual has reported being strangled by their intimate partner, they are 10 times more likely to be killed by them. In fiscal year 2022, out of the 76 individuals Thrive Virginia served, 21 reported the use of a weapon, 18 reported threats of suicide or homicide, 8 reported strangulation. Unfortunately, from these numbers, we know that we aren't reaching nearly enough people with our services, and we want to continue to raise awareness so all of those who need help know where to turn. So, how do you connect with these individuals? In part, by spreading awareness during October, Thrive Virginia staff will promote this DV campaign by placing posters with powerful quotes around the community to highlight various overshadowed power and control methods outside of physical violence, such as financial, psychological, and emotional abuse. Host our Healthy Families Self-Care Event, designed for families to focus on their mental and physical well-being. Self-care options such as yoga and massages will be offered. Additionally, we will have door prizes and resource boards available with self-care tips, local resources for mental and physical health, and staff members present to answer any questions. There will also be fun outdoor games offered and face paintings so that the whole family can feel cared for and enjoy themselves. Thank you so much for your time and attention this evening. We have purple ribbons and our hotline cards, which we will leave at the front of the building. Please feel free to pay some to share with the community.
Thank you. You may not realize we have a resolution in our package tonight, so hopefully you're going to stick around.
Thank you.
And this time we did it before the month of October.
Anyone else? Anyone online, Ms. Branch? Okay. Seeing no one else for public commentary, I'll go ahead and close it. Generally, we have the consent agenda before us today. I would like to note for everyone, the Resolution 22-78 honoring the life and accomplishments of Queen Elizabeth II. I asked Ms., I asked Mr. Ashcraft to try to research. Ms. Branch did reach out, and she was the eighth cousin, Ms. Branch? Cousin removed of William. William the Second or something, William the Third, who is the namesake of King William County, so I thought that was interesting. If I could get a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Reading through, the sheriff sent us an email, and I don't see the correction in here. The overtime cost.
Oh, in the minutes?
Yeah. Okay, okay. That's all I want to make sure. It should be 6,000 to 7,000, 67,000. Would have been broke, wouldn't you, Sheriff? Quit. And that's the only thing. I didn't see it in every, if she's done it, it's complete.
A motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion, Ms. Branch?
Hi. 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 Hi.
Hi. And actually, ladies, we're up for the reclaiming October. I assume you don't have anything else to present this evening? Are there any other highlights you want to emphasize? No, that's quite a lot. I didn't know whether to stop here or not, so. Any questions about Resolution 22-79?
No, sir. Mr. Chair, I'm of adoption of Resolution 22-79.
Second.
Motion and properly second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Branch?
Hi. 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 Hi.
Hi. Next up, we have Erin B. Hawkins, CPA, the draft report, audit results.
Members of the board, thanks for having me here this evening. Erin Hawkins with Robinson Farmer Cox, and here to present the draft report for your FY21 audit at long last. It's been quite a process to get to this point. Again, this is the, this is the June 30, 21 audit. And so, when the audit process began, Ann Wall was the partner in charge from our office and did the preliminary work when we, when we first started the audit in probably the summer or spring of 2021, and then came back into the, in the fall, tried to do some final fieldwork, but the big hang-up at the time was, was the bank reconciliations that weren't caught up here at the county. And so, the final audit fieldwork, whilst there were procedures done, and they did as much as they could, there was no way that they could get to, you know, arrive at, you know, finishing the audit. And so, Ann ended up retiring as of December 31, 21. And I had helped Ann do some test work during the spring of, you know, when we did our initial testing, you know, it's kind of just a help to her. I've been a partner in our office for the last six years of the partner, 15 or 16 years an employee of the firm, so I was chosen to kind of fill in and take it the rest of the way. And so, first thing we had to do was get to the bottom of, you know, where are we with the bank reconciliations and, you know, how far along are we? And the county ended up having to bring in some external consulting to get to, to get help reconcile the bank accounts. And so, we were able to come on site either, either the end of June, early July. The bank accounts were finally caught up and reconciled, and so we were able to really begin the process of finalizing the audit. You know, when I'm, when I'm doing an audit and I get your financial reports given to me, which is, you know, you have all your accounts, your cash, receivables, liabilities, revenues, expenditures, on down the line. As we audit certain things, I check-mark everything, you know, all the important items. And so, and I don't start that process until I know you've got your cash right, because until you have that, you could end up having to erase all these checkmarks that you checked and then have to go back and see if they're still all, all correct. And so, finally got the cash right. We were able to do a majority of our audit procedures, and then we got probably 90% of the way, and then we had to deal with some, I won't say problems or errors, but the county had a new accounting system, and that was a compound on everything together at this point. But also, they used that new system to keep track of the capital assets for the county. And so, that was kind of the last hurdle, was making sure they could update their software to be in accordance with what the balances were from the previous year and any new additions. And so, got that taken care of, and then have now finalized the audit. And so, I'm sorry for getting a little long-winded there. I've brought with me some draft reports. I don't know if everyone here has one of these, or they're sitting over there. If anyone, I can sort of pass you that. I'm not going to go over too many pages in here, but I've flagged some that I'd like to just go over with you all. There's also a PDF of this report that can be obtained as well from the folks in finance. And I would like to thank the folks in finance for being patient with me and, you know, doing everything they can to fulfill our requests and, and get us the, the finish line. As you get this report, the first page I'm going to, that I've flagged that will talk to you about is Page 1. And it's where I always start, and it's where in this financial statements, you'll see our name, Robinson Farmer Cox Associates at the top. This is, this is our auditor's report, and it contains our audit opinions. And on the second page, you actually see a paragraph where we give our opinion that the financial statements that follow this are free of any material misstatement based on our testing. You'll also see that we had some new accounting principles on that page, too, the paragraph where we talked about some new GASB statements that were implemented during the year. The biggest one was GASB Statement Number 84. And what that did was, you all have traditionally had some funds in your financial statements that were previously referred to as agency funds. And now, I believe for all of your agency funds, they're now all custodial funds, and how they'll be reported. For the school board, they had, the schools always had their own bank accounts. They called them the School Activity Fund. Each school has a bank account. They've got all their fundraisers, book fairs, built it, things like that, their own little bank account. Well, those bank accounts never used to be included in this for the school financial statements. But this new GASB Statement that came, came out required that now these be included within the school's financial statements as well. So, that was another addition to the FY21 report and financial statement. When I flip ahead to Page 7, which is Exhibit 3, and it's where I like to point out what your fund balance looks like at the end of the year. For your general fund, you had total fund balances of 10.7 million. And really, the more important figure is what's your unassigned figure, which is about $7 million of unassigned fund balance, which is free to use at the county's discretion.
What is it, was it D121?
Yes, sir. It was at the end of 21. Also, on Exhibit 3, you'll notice that you have what I believe is a new fund. It may have been around in '20, but if it was, it wouldn't have had much activity, but you have an ARPA fund. You know, that's at the very end of '21. That's, I think it was maybe even on the last day of the year, June 30, if you all had a big deposit in your bank account for ARPA fund. And you'll see that there's a line called unearned revenue, and what that means is that's money that you, that you perceive but not yet spent. And so, that was a, a big number to point out on that page. On Page 9, which is Exhibit 5, you can see the changes in your fund balance. You'll see that the general fund balance increased about $2.4 million. Across the board, though, there really, I mean, the net change amongst all your governmental funds is only $22,718, so very little change in terms of total fund balances. On Pages 11, 12, 13, 14, this is, I flagged these just to very briefly point out, so I talked about it earlier. This is where we've had to change these statements for what used to be your agency funds, that are now called custodial funds, for special welfare, BGC, CCA, Project Lifesaver, Dare, accounts held at the sheriff's office, and fire and EMS. I'm going to jump very far ahead now to Page 113, just to also point out where the School Activity Fund accounts are now included in the school's financial statements. Again, this is Exhibit 33 on Page 113 of this report. You'll see that School Activity Funds has its own column added there as well as on Exhibit 34. Again, that was, this was added because of the new accounting state, GASB Statement Number 84. I'm jumping ahead now to Page 163, which is where we begin to have our, you'll see our name, Robinson Farmer Cox, at the top of the page again. So, Page 163 is actually our report on internal control testing and compliance testing that we do. And you'll see that we did notate that we had three findings to report from our control testing and compliance testing, or excuse me, from our control testing. And then, on Page 164, you'll see that we also had one finding to report from compliance, which is a state compliance matter, and I'll get to those momentarily. On Page 165, we had our report and opinion on uniform guidance. And what that means is, being that the county is an entity that receives greater than $750,000 in federal assistance, you're required to get a single audit under the uniform guidance. And we performed our testing for federal compliance. The two programs that we tested were Title I at the school board, and then the biggest one at the county was the CARES CRF program that we had to test, and we had no findings to report on our federal compliance testing. It was an unmodified opinion. Now, to talk to you about the, the findings that we had from our internal controls and compliance testing, that begins on Page 171. The first one was on auditor, basically it was for adjustments that had to be prepared by the auditor to get to the final balances. Basically, what I mentioned earlier, you know, we get a, we get your financial statements, and I put all those checkmarks. What, what I left out is, we have this financial paper from you all, and then we have a column that I call the unadjusted, which is what you've given me. And then I have columns where if I have to make adjustments to the numbers, and then I have a final balance, and that's where I put my checkmarks. So, I had to make adjustments to get to these final numbers that reached a, you know, a material level, which required us to report a finding here on this page. On Page 172, we've got segregation of duties. This was, this was a continuation from the previous year in terms of in the processes, and I think the church's office was where it was mostly identified. When you have overlapping duties for someone is performing procedures and also approving, or when you have a lack of segregation of duties, it requires you to report this finding. And then on Page 173, this was where we identified the bank reconciliation process or problems that were noted during the year. Basically, for a very big chunk of the year, you know, the bank reconciliations weren't being done. So, and the reason that's such a big problem, and I kind of made mention of this earlier, you know, I can't start my audit and start checking things off till I know it's done. When you're getting your monthly financial information presented to you, that, that bank reconciliation being formed is what really lets you know that it's accurate information you're getting. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, if, if the cash, you know, you can make cash be, your balance, cash balance be whatever you want it to be, your, your revenues and expenditures wouldn't, wouldn't be accurate. And so, if the cash is right, you know, it's going to give you, and there's some other things that could be going, going wrong as well in terms of accruals and liabilities and payables and things like that, but it's going to give you your biggest, you know, advantage to know that the information you're being presented is correct at the, at the bank reconciliation are being performed and being performed highly. And but the big problem, the big problem there also was just, number one, the, the turnover, you know, the turnover in the office there, as well as having to deal with a whole new accounting system, kind of just the perfect storm for, you know, causing that to get behind. And the problem is, once you get behind in the bank reconciliation process, it gets really harder to dig yourself, you know, out of that hole. It gets harder and harder as, as long as time goes on. And then on Page 174 is where we had our compliance finding we had to report. There was a state compliance issue. And so, what happened was when the school board advertised the public hearing for their budget, they, they're still required to, to do so in a public newspaper. And, you know, it might make more sense. I know for my kids, I certainly give most of my information on, on the website or in an email or something like that. So, I'm more likely to see that there than I am in the newspaper, but Code of Virginia still says we're supposed to do that, put it in an advertisement. And so, they advertise on the website, not in the newspapers, so we had to report the finding on that. That was all the pages that I had flagged. And, and looking forward to FY22, you know, the, the biggest thing that we, to be on top of is the bank reconciliation and staying on top of that and making sure that, you know, like I said, the longer, the longer you don't keep up to date with it, the harder it is to get out of it. And so, it's, it should be the, the main, from a financial perspective, the main focus until you're caught up. And then, it still should be the main focus, but once you're caught up, it should be a lot easier to stay caught.
Gentlemen, please. Questions? Why are there so many pages missing?
So many pages missing? Well, yeah, I can get to that. So, what you're looking at is, is really, it's a draft. This isn't final yet. And so, there are certain pieces that still need to be added. One big, one big chunk is the, what we call the MBNA, that the county finance will pull together for us. They haven't had time to pull it together yet. Lord knows, I, I didn't provide this to them until late last week. So, that's one piece, and then at the very end, that's where we put in our statistical information. That still needs to be added as well. So, it is a draft, and so to get from draft to final, it's those pieces. Other than that, it's, we need to get, we need to get a representation letter that we'll send out to the county to get signed by, I believe, the, the board chair and probably the county administrator, well, a couple of other, other folks as well, school board superintendent, maybe even someone from the Social Services Department as well. And then the last piece is the attorney letter. We'll send out an attorney letter request just to make sure that there's no pending litigation claims or assessments that were in existence as of June 30, 21, or even up through now, that, that would need, require inclusion or disclosure in the statements. And so, that's, those are the last pieces to get us from, from draft to final. I don't, I don't anticipate any changes to numbers or, you know, in this report. The only thing that's still changed are the inclusion of those items that I mentioned that aren't in there now. And our quality control department will be reviewing it for any punctuation, verbiage, or things like that.
We'll review, but nothing, nothing as of yet. Mr. Hawkins? Nothing.
Tonight is, Mr. Chair, I'm, this is the first time we've seen this tonight, right? It wasn't available prior to tonight, was it?
It was in the package. It was in the package. It's same, same as I had.
No, it wasn't in the original.
You weren't expected to be first.
All right. Yeah, this is the first time I've seen it. I was just wondering, but evidently I missed it.
I also did. Mr. Hawkins, is there a, a degree of seriousness to these findings, to these individual findings? Is, is there a way to grade the, the level of seriousness, or is it, is it in accounting speak here that I just don't see?
No, it's a good question. So, if something's in this report as a finding, it automatically has the level of seriousness, or else it would be what we would send out in like a separate letter, you know? And we still may send out a separate management letter that just has little, like little internal control things that we noticed along the way. But if something gets included in the report, there is a level of seriousness to it. But to dive even deeper, not all findings are the same level of seriousness. Some of them are more than others. For instance, the segregation of duties issue isn't as big a deal as not having your bank reconciliations performed for
This is what I'm getting at. What do we attack first is where I'm leading. But the people that do this know what to do. Okay, any? I just know the purpose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Betts with the Regional Animal Shelter.
Good evening.
The animal shelter somehow is not included in the comprehensive plan. And there is a need for increased animal services when the population increases. Um, and there is a need for increased animal services when the population increases. Mister Ashcraft asked me to put together a strategic plan for the shelter so we could kind of map out. Where we need to go as far as um, providing services that is going to. Ensure that our organization is serving the best interest of the animals and the citizens of the community. Um, you all received this. I'll just touch on the vision of future goals. That the regional animal shelter would become a successful, comprehensive, community animal resource center. Supporting the needs of the growing populations of citizens and animal companions. Services would be based on industry best practices to address the causes of animal overpopulation and lack of pet retention. Through spay neuter programs, adoption, transfer, foster homes, education and outreach. We will increase community awareness of the animal population needs in the counties we serve and work to lower the number of surplus animals. What I can do is I can just state the goals. There are seven goals. And if you have any specific questions about that goal, we can discuss it. Uh, goal number one is to develop organizational capacity. By strengthening government partnerships. Develop an organizational infrastructure that supports the achievement of the organization's vision and goals. Any questions there? Goal number two, create and maintain an efficient model facility that goes beyond being compliant with all state codes and meets the community's. Expectation for an animal resource center. By increase, increasing service offerings, develop and implement programs based on industry best practices. To improve shelter operations, animal care and increase our positive release rate. Be responsive to the community's needs. Demonstrate a high standard of cleanliness. Goal number three, provide educational opportunities for the community to learn. About the services and strategies available to help them keep their pets healthy. And reduce the population of feral and forsaken animals. By improving access to and utilization of low cost or no cost spay neuter. And decreasing euthanasia. Goal number four, improve the quality and capacity for care provided to animals in the shelter. Capital improvements to the facility. And reduce stress to shelter cats and dogs. Goal number five, improve the quantity and quality of community shelter adoptions. Improve adoption retention rates and improve overall adoption rates. Goal number six, communicate effectively and timely within the shelter. Ensure that all staff members are aware of key activities in every area of the shelter. Goal seven, develop a positive, visible presence in the community. By developing and enhancing media relations. And being a visible and organized, being visible and organized in a positive way. To mobilize the community to work toward our vision. Are there any questions about the specific strategies?
Going back, going back to goal one is. Rough question. That is King and Queen holding up their part of the bargain here.
Oh. Um, you know, financially, I can't speak to that. Um, I know that, you know. They don't seem to support what we're doing. They just kind of park their animals and leave. Um. I think there's more that the count King and Queen County could do to support the shelter. I mean, King William and King William County provides everything, you know, from landscaping to. The um, building repair needs. Um. And I don't, you know, I I don't know honestly if King and Queen wants to do more. They have a part-time animal control officer. King William has two full-time animal control officers. And we definitely handle more King William animals than we do King and Queen. Um. King and Queen is the county that. Um, they're basically reactive. Like when we have our large quantity animal seizures, they all come from King and Queen, you know. Sixty-eight at a time, thirty-four at a time, twelve, six, whatever. And that just shuts down the whole shelter until they resolve that. So I think we need to have a conversation with King and Queen about um, what their vision is.
There's a new administrator, so I think Mister Ashcraft has it on his things to do.
Yes.
Real curious, uh, the animal shelter opened on September twenty-first, two thousand nine, but date on this SOP is December ten, two thousand eight. Any idea? I'm sure you are here.
The SOP, no, I was here.
You were?
Yeah. The SOPs were adopted prior to the shelter opening. There were several delays. In the shelter opening due to contractor issues, so it kept getting pushed back. Um, but the SOPs were adopted, you know, before that.
Based on the gentleman's uh, current. Their public comment period this evening, is there anything that needs to be addressed? In this SOP or strategic plan?
Well, I mean, part of this strategic plan is to revisit all of the SOPs and update them and change them as, as need be.
Do you have a target goal in mind?
Um, you know, we need to get some staffing issues straight before I can even work this strategic plan.
A work in progress.
It it is. And, you know, strategic plans are a work in progress. Things are going to change. It might get, you know, it might take two years longer than what I've estimated.
Mr. Chair. Oh, boy. Uh, if I may, uh, I'm not in total disagreement with Mister Owens either. You know, we are. You, your release rates are really, really good. Actually, I was looking at in two thousand eleven, it was only thirty-eight percent.
Mm-hmm.
Now, well, twenty twenty-one, it was seventy-four percent. That's a vast improvement. I just wonder if maybe if those standards were lowered a little bit. You know, it is. Mister Owens had a good point. Some breeds of dogs are not the type of dogs that you would want to keep in a house. And I would be willing to bet you that some of those animals may have been uh, adopted, you know, if. And and I don't know, how, how much do y'all lean on that question now? If somebody says that they are not going to keep an animal in the house, do you automatically disqualify them if it's a large breed dog?
We follow, we follow industry best practices and that is that these are companion animals. And that's what they mean. They're being kept as companions. Um, when you're going to isolate a dog in a six-by-six pen. For the rest of its life, you know.
Apparently you've never owned a rabbit dog, then?
I've owned beagles. Yes, they've been in my house.
Cause you would probably had a problem with your rigs when I had mine. I don't have them any longer, but. Uh, that's when they're the happiest, when they're outrunning.
Well, and and I get that, but at the same time, they, they can spend time with the family as a companion as well. Instead of just being outside twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year and all weather and having. A wooden dog box and no other companion. No other dogs around, no people taking it rabbit hunting.
I had several of them. And and they had companions there, but they weren't in the house. He wouldn't have wanted to, you wouldn't have wanted.
Well, and and we've worked with um, a couple hump clubs in the last year that have. Looked to lower their numbers for whatever reason. They were thinning out the club, retiring older dogs. And they were kind enough to reach out to us and say, you know, hey, we have six beagles. That have been kept in pens with other beagles. And instead of turning the dogs loose because they didn't want them anymore or bringing them all to the shelter at once. When we may not have room for six surrendered dogs. They worked with us over about six weeks to bring in a couple dogs at a time. And all of those dogs went to Beagle-specific rescue groups. Or were adopted as household pets. You know, once they're spayed and neutered. They can be household pets and the state law requires that of shelter adoption. They still might like to run rabbits and there's nothing wrong with that.
There's nothing about them in the woods. But I'm, I guess I'm old school, but and we are in King William County.
Well, I understand that. I'm, I know exactly where I am.
Mister Chair, if I may ask Mister Ashcraft a couple of questions. I. Uh, I couldn't help but notice the agreement that we have with uh, King Queen County. And in there, it is a fifty percent cost share plus a three percent administrative uh. Uh, fee that they pay. So. We've had a discussion before. Are they currently up to date in what they owe us? Do they, do they lag behind?
She's saying yes.
They are.
My director, director finance says that we are.
Okay. Yes.
Do animal control officers ever get pulled over to King and Queen if they are two full-time here and one part-time there?
No.
They can't cross jurisdiction.
Say, no, I'm not answering.
Do they have jurisdictional rights?
They don't need to weigh anybody.
Yeah. Okay.
Which means if requested, they could.
Got you. Anything else?
That will be on.
Our, our animal control officers are busy, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I agree. Mr. Green? Thank you, Ms. Betts.
Okay.
We'll be.
Um, I did just want to finish with the um. Regarding the very last page, which is the um, fiscal summary. Um. I am going to request again the um, animal or the animal shelter program coordinator in FY twenty-four. So that we can again. Start our own in-house foster program. We don't have a foster program now. There's people in this community that would help with fostering animals beyond kittens that need to be bottle-fed. Or maybe medical animals that need um, rest and rehab out of the shelter. To maybe just a dog that needs to decompress from the shelter and get into a um, a family-type. Lifestyle. Um, and to also be able to do a T and R program. To. Bring back our low-cost spay neuter program, which we had to suspend in May. Um, primarily because of a lack of access to veterinary services, which is a nationwide. Problem since COVID and we're facing that in King William as well. Um, Mister Ashcraft is going to bring to you this coming Monday. Uh, a personnel request. That I hope you can seriously consider helping on right now because um, with set six part-time positions. That are chronically vacant or constantly rolling over. Um, we're not able to retain staff. Plus, it doesn't seem like anybody really wants to work now. And the staff is, is about in crisis mode. Um, March of twenty-two through August of twenty-two. We already handled a hundred animals more than we did during the same time period last year. A lot of that is what's going on with the economy. People are having to let their animals go. Um, housing crisis. And just not being able to afford them. So they winding up on our doorstep.
Is the financial request going to include King and Queen making a share?
Mister Hodgins, we'll try to stay within this year's budget so that we don't have to uh, appropriate additional funds or ask King and Queen. But I, that's why we don't have it this evening because we're still looking at. At the various scenarios in order, in order to do that. But if it would. Have to uh, exceed that, then we would certainly ask fifty-fifty as the agreement says. Or would consider their share and we would ask uh, King Queen to do their share. But Miss, that's, she's absolutely correct. We are, we are having a, there's staffing issues there. With the multitude of uh, of animals that have come in and. Just the busyness of that uh, of that center. And if I could say one other thing, the chairman read it, that agreement is working on fifteen years old. Uh, we need to uh, reintroduce. Who's in, who's responsible for what? Uh, we'll first go to King and Queen and see of their interest. They have a new county administrator that will be starting soon. Um, they may have a different perspective on it than they did fifteen years ago. If so, uh, we may need to decide on uh, on how we approach. Uh, the opportunity of possibly this shelter being a standalone for King William. Uh, if King Queen does not want to participate, but that would not be our first uh. We feel always, we always want to be a good neighbor. We always want to help those that that need us. But at the same time, uh, if it becomes a, a, a matter of we can't move forward because. We kind of have a weight around our leg, then we got to ask you to uh, for guidance as to how we get there.
So, so you generated another question with that. Who owns the building yet if they were to step out?
Believe there's language in the building that says that we do.
Yeah, I think there was a um, five years that if either party left, the other would buy them out.
Would buy them.
Yeah, so we're past that five year.
So, there's a lot, you'll be hearing a lot about the shelters moving forward uh, as we enter into the budget season.
I'm, I'm considering a survey. They could become a very powerful tool. To assess the community's. Stomach for. Increasing what the shelter does.
That's a good idea.
Something to think about.
It is.
The Parks and Rec survey was very nicely done.
Good, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have new business. Resolution twenty-two eighty-three, amendment budget. Some citing.
Correct, sir. Good evening. Um, so previously, uh, the board had approved. Uh, citing project for the three sixty community center, uh, replacing the T one eleven citing there that is. Uh, has been rotting and um. Well, since the time it was approved and. Implemented in the budget, costs went up. We thought we would be able to collect some odds and ends at the end of the fiscal year and. Make that up. Instead, the costs went up again. So. This is the, this is the proposal on the table right now that we would like to act on now. And uh, it would require a budget amendment. We're asking that funds be moved out of roofing projects and into the. Uh, three sixty renovation line of capital for this year. Sorry, there is actually a typo. On the little spreadsheet on the resolution that says FY twenty-four should be twenty uh, three. Uh, because that would be for this year.
You're saying. Twenty-four would be twenty-three?
Correct. Under the, you've got the heading of this little. Full uh, spreadsheet, general description and FY twenty-twenty-two. And the next line, it, or the next column, it should be FY twenty-twenty-three. Because this is for this fiscal year that we would like to move on this project immediately.
We already have bids?
Yes, we actually have gone through procurement uh, several times.
And you want to move money from the roofing?
Mm-hmm. Which has been building up year after year.
What projects we need to repair or?
We had an estimate several years ago on the lifetime of the courthouse. I think that's the major one left as well as uh, we added the three sixty community center to that. Three sixty community center doesn't, we did some patching on what had been leaking when we bought the place. It looks like that's got a little time left on it. Um. We still haven't uh, we haven't done anything further with courthouse. We've just been adding up to build up. We still haven't uh, we haven't done anything further with courthouse. We've just been adding up to build up to what the uh appraise or the uh. Quote was several years ago. Um, I want to have somebody else come out again this year before FY twenty-four budget talks to uh. Give us a updated price on that.
When you're speaking of the the three sixty convenience center, you're talking about the Fox and Rec building, right?
Correct.
They replaced the shingles on that.
Has it all been replaced?
I'm almost certain. I was up there uh one day when they were working.
That's right. That one has been. So it's just the courthouse. It's the big project left.
And and I guess my concern is we moved it that.
We're gonna have to make up for it in next budget. It's either. Be funded the same way, uh typically out of the unassigned fund for our capital. Deferred maintenance.
So the siding project is total project is fifty-eight, fifty-eight.
Correct, fifty-eight.
That building needed side and on it when we purchased it. So you raised the issue. Yeah, sure.
Was this one of four gonna cover the courthouse?
I believe we still had another year to go on that.
No, but I mean financially have got an estimate on.
We had an estimate several years ago. So that's outdated. We do need to get someone else out there to give us a new estimate on on what we're looking at.
So was it less than what you got here? I guess is really what I'm getting at. The oldest.
The old estimate is more than what we've got left because we were still gonna be building up at least another year. Yeah.
Anyone else? So this will be twenty-two dash eight-three R. This is a pencil change. Anyone care to make a motion?
Make a motion to adapt twenty-two dash eight-three R, Mr. Chair.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and properly seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch? Thank you, Mister Hudgens.
Miss Chairman, members of the board, uh, you have my report under agenda item ten. Allow me to go over a couple uh dates and then a couple of the highlights of the report and then I'm happy to answer any questions. I want to uh. Remind the board that there is a uh general election on November the eighth and pre-voting. Special early voting has uh has started. Uh, we have the opportunity to uh use this building as a voting precinct. So anyone who's interested in uh in pre-voting should go to the registrar's office and they will take care of that. And if someone cannot uh physically get out of their car, then they can call ahead and the registrar will take the ballot out to them. And they can do it uh curbside. So. And as a theme to that, uh, the NAACP of King William is holding a uh. Uh, a veterans event, which is also related to a voter registration. And that'll be on uh September the twenty-eighth from nine to three at their offices on Sharon Road. And then another date I'd like to uh give everybody uh in West Point a shout out for the Crab Carnival. Uh, that is this Friday and and uh and Saturday.
And and keep your ears attuned because they're looking at the weather.
Yes, sir.
It's supposed to be like a natural rain and they're not sure, high winds on Saturday, but just. Keep alert to any, because it could be changed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hodges. Understand it's a great event and uh we'd encourage everyone to attend. The COVID uh exposure continues to go up and down. Right now, we're on the good side. We're at the medium level for exposure. And we're always encouraging people who have not got vaccinated to uh. Either visit their physician or go to the health department and they'll be able to uh take care of that. Something we don't mention as often as we probably should, our unemployment rate in King William is two point six. That is uh, that's very significant for a county our size and especially uh where we're located. Uh, we have one of the lowest unemployments in the entire middle peninsula and uh. Although we do have probably more people than we would like to have to commute out of the county to find uh their employment. We still have uh people who wanna work and uh that that percentage reflects that. Want to continue to give kudos to the Fire and EMS department. They've received yet another grant. It's ten thousand dollars for improvements uh. To the emergency operations center that we're trying to develop in the uh Station One building. The EDA uh discussed the farmer's market at its last meeting. And uh, they have decided to seek a citizens board who would uh take over the operations of the market. Uh, that board would uh be involved in planning, uh coordinating, uh running the events, the vendors and et cetera. Uh, so anyone who might be interested in serving on a board who would promote the farmer's market. Uh, they can put uh their name into county admin and we would be forwarding them on to the EDA. Uh, for uh, I guess the compilation. Since it's not a freestanding uh uh border commission, uh the board supervisors would not need to uh. Take the matter up or even approve it. Now, if you chose that you wanted to make it uh that in the future, then we certainly would change the direction. But right now, the board is just looking for a vol- uh, EDA is looking for a group of volunteers who will who will uh help. Means ru- actually run the market. Anytime you recognize as a national something, that's pretty significant. And West Point Elementary School has been named a blue ribbon school. And I can tell you from previous experiences, that distinction is not given out lightly. Uh, you literally have to have your act together in order to uh get that accomplishment. Uh, it has to do with uh your your test scores and your and your faculty involvement and your administration. And even at the school board level, the decisions they're making. So on behalf of everyone in King William County, it should be a big congratulations to West Point. Elementary School because that is a, that is a high level of achievement in which they've reached. And then finally, uh, Mister Chairman, in my report, uh, would ask the board of supervisors to begin to give some thoughts. On the uh appointments uh to the Board of Equalization. I'll be asking you on November the twenty-eighth, uh, if you would finalize that list and we can uh. Uh, we can make those uh appointments. If there's anyone who wants to uh to be considered for that position. Uh, you would uh submit an application which is available online or you certainly can contact county admin and they will uh. They would, Chris particularly, will take care of it. As you know, we also have appointments pending for other uh boards and commissions. Uh, social services uh with the new director starting next Monday. We really need to get that board uh in place. So we'll be bringing uh what we have to you, probably uh either at the Monday's meeting or the end of October. Uh, and we also have uh the V two fifty committee that we're trying to uh, that we're also trying to uh get together. So we have a lot of, a lot of opportunities for for folks who would like to uh to serve on boards and commissions. And Mister Chairman, um, there's a number of uh of reports that are following mine that are in the packet. Uh, if the board has any questions uh to any of those reports, I'll be happy to try to uh respond to them.
Well, it's like everybody's staying busy. Mister Ash, uh, the Board of Equalization, is there? Are there criteria online that sort sort of gives people a list of fundamental? I'm sure we can cut and paste from a couple of years ago. It's gonna be tough this year, I'm afraid. I approached a few people and it's.
No question.
Well, thank, anyone else? Any questions, Mister Ashman?
Uh, just one. I mentioned a possible instead of paving Station One about seeing if you could move to the school. And they do a teachwork day. I know we do that in West Point on election day. And that way it, you know, it really doesn't interfere with anything doing that. If you, we checked with him at all.
I checked with the registrar. I understand that is already a. Yeah, yeah, um, and and obviously it's a big facility, but uh it it doesn't appear like you to bring another. Uh, whole precinct into that. It may, it may be a little confusing, but we did talk with the registrar.
Yeah, in that report also, uh, there was something going on with the the second precinct also.
Yeah, we're looking into that as well.
It was just the access.
Right.
But they.
Is that your church? Your church, every, is it, would you come with? Second priest, yes.
Yeah, that's the Sweet Home Priest.
They don't, they use the.
They use the the basement of church.
But I, I was telling, I was telling Mister Ashcraft that in the last last uh election. Cycle for the board of supervisors, I was there at the fourth and uh, they were physically coming out the cars. For for handicapped people also. I don't know whether that's going on in the other precincts.
Well, curbside in that manner, they can provide it all precincts.
Yeah.
Uh, just call in and they come right out.
Right.
Right, and there's also a, you know, one of the air pressure operated thingers out there when the car rolls over and alerts somebody's out there.
It sometime works well. We had problems with one in West Point, but they finally just left somebody out there, but they did take care of that.
I do feel that there's some, still some question about whether we are required. If there's access and people coming to the cars. Do we have to spend half a million dollars to pave a parking lot?
You don't have to, Mi- Mister Chairman, my understanding, you don't have to pave the entire lot.
It was just the accessory.
Yeah, that was the uh, that was just. Uh, I wanted the board to know, first of all, it's it's the attention of the electoral officials. We are going to give you an option that would meet the compliance. And and unfortunately, I think the option would look like patchwork, but at the same time, if that's what meets compliance and that's what meets our budget, then we'll. We'll do it that way. Obviously, paving the lot would uh would be more aesthetically. It would also give uh, if we were gonna put concrete on it as well in the bay areas, which would absorb uh. You know, obviously the pressure from the vehicles that are gonna be going in and out of the bays. But we could, we can look at the budget and see where we are, but uh it it's expensive. Uh, there's no doubt about it. It's uh, it'll be expensive if we choose to do it.
And we have expenses out there that'll go, will come to you in a few years too, on the fire department. That's what I'm really. Looking at all the stuff that we're spending money. We still want to figure that out.
Yeah, absolutely right. And grants won't run out. Or the ARPA money too, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, y'all.
Moving into comments, uh, Mister Hudgens.
He sort of took mine away with the crab carnival. That's pretty much what I was gonna say. Uh, if parking downtown is is. They've got parking lots up above. If we don't get bad weather, uh, there'll be signs along or around the mill that you can. Get in there and there'll be shuttles taking boats down. Uh, there is a handicap and I'm not quite sure exactly where it'll be this year. It's usually in the area of a Episcopal church downtown. But if it's good weather, it is a nice event. But that's.
Will they reschedule or cancel?
Uh, we cancel. It it's too much to try to, because most of these vendors, they could, they're going somewhere next week. And the week after, you know, uh, you can't really get them back in and. I just hope the wind doesn't come in. We had that one year and it tore up some stuff down there after it was all set up.
Mister Moskowski?
Uh, not much, Mister Chairman. Thanks for coming, everybody. Uh, yeah, looking forward to hopefully a good event at Crab Carnival this weekend. Uh, and we'll see you all back in a couple of weeks.
A week?
The next street, there's just a, thanks for coming. Don't look like anybody much participates in Zoom anyway. So when. Somebody tried to get on and they said that they couldn't get on. Thanks for remembering. He said he doesn't have Zoom anymore, so.
It was an arm problem. That would be why he couldn't.
Technology problem.
Well, everybody touched on it. Big shout out to the people in Florida with that hurricane bearing down on. Uh, I have family in the Tampa area. And hopefully they stay out of harm's way. You know, Mister Hardwick, I know you were asking saying how bad we need rain. Be careful what you wish for. Uh, and congratulations to West Point Elementary School. I'm shocked you didn't throw those kudos out, Neil.
I knew he was going to, he'd already brought it up once before.
All right.
That's good. Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening. Short agenda. We are gonna go in the closed session. I don't think we'll be too long. So please stick around. If I could get the uh motion to convene.
Thank you, Travis.
Sure, Mister Chair, uh, I move to convene in closed meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one, the Code of Virginia. To consider appointment of individuals to boards and commissions. And to consider personnel matter involving the assignment of a specific public officer appointee or employee in accordance with section two point two. That's thirty-seven eleven eight three of the Code of Virginia regarding the acquisition of real property for a public service, public purpose rather. And in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight eight of the Code of Virginia to consult with legal counsel regarding taxation of federally recognized tribes. Requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel.
I have a motion, probably second. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi, we're now in closed session.
Chair, I move, we re- we open session.
Motion made and probably second, Ms. Branch.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, we could get a uh.
Mister Chair, I move SR one.
Probably moved in second, Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Hi, and we have a uh. Recommendation to approve Mister Keith Fogg to the Board of zoning appeals. If I could uh have a motion to pass resolution twenty-two dash eighty-one.
Second.
Moved in second, Ms. Branch.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, and one more resolution.
Mister Chair, I'm moving to approve twenty-two dash eight. Second.
You have a motion and probably second. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
Nay.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. And gentlemen, no further business, I assume. I could get a motion.
Make the motion to adjourn second.
Motion made, seconded, Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Hi, thank you, gentlemen.